Changes to our school and hopes of making it a safe environment for learning. First, we're happy to welcome Deputy J.R. Weaver as our School Resource Officer. Officer Weaver provides a critical layer of security for our school, which in turn keeps our students and staff safe. Officer Weaver is a visible presence in our building, which builds trust with students. Next, we've implemented a sixth grade academy to support the transition from elementary to middle school. These students are grouped into a part of the building that keeps them close to restrooms, cafeteria, a gym, and office area. Further, we've developed a targeted intervention program that assigns students to work with teachers in reading and math based on IXL data. Students complete a diagnostic in IXL each month to monitor their growth in math and reading. Based on the most recent data, intervention groups are reassigned on a monthly basis to best meet the needs of students. Finally, one of the most lasting changes is the transition from Jackson County Middle School Colonels to Jackson County Middle School Generals. As a result, our mascot and school colors have changed. Our new general mascot, along with red, white, and blue, will now represent J-CMS. This change will align the middle school and high school sports teams. The idea is that it will build camaraderie between the schools, which will make the transition from middle school to high school smoother and a positive experience. To share more with you about the great things going on at J-CMS, I've invited two J-CMS students, Mr. Avery Stewart and Ms. Chrissy Vaughn, to share a short presentation. So come on out. Y'all do a great job. You want to use the clicker? No? You want to tell him? How you gonna do it? Don't matter. I'll leave it here to you if you want to. Okay. Are they experts?
First, we have extracurricular activities such as the academic team, boys and girls basketball, boys and girls golf, boys and girls archery, baseball, softball, football, cheerleading, SBOP, band, cross country, track and field, and volleyball.
At middle school, we have our academic team, which is the coach is Timmy Markham. And what we do there is we go to different schools. Sometimes we stay at our school and we don't go to other stuff. And it's a really fun time.
We have a school-wide activities, extracurricular activities, PBIS, spring formal, proficient distinguished picnic, proficient distinguished awards, and championship awards day, and junior. Sixth, seventh, and eighth grade band club. This is where, like, if you have a certain GPA, you get to go on a long field which directs our education for students.
We have a spring formal every year. And Miss Timmy Markham and other staff sets it up and then run the spring formal. It's a great opportunity for students to celebrate the end of the first semester with breaks. REMEX provides a variante energized assembly program, which teaches students information about anti-bullying and teamwork. We also deliver some anti-bullying message.
Seventh grade bullying poster contest. That is for first place, Aubrey Madden, second, Lyndon Strackwell, and then third, Autumn Mock. That is where, like, they show that bullying is wrong in a way that everyone sees it. Homecoming Queen, Jalen Wells, Homecoming King, Jackson Lakes. This is where people that represent the class well get voted in to the competition to see who is the best one.
We have many classroom activities. A lot of different people come in and help. And it's a really fun way to let students engage in different things instead of a paper or.
High school athletes in the sixth grade academy. So they get ready to go into sixth grade. There's broader classes, vague schedules for them to go around and just explore the J-CMS school.
A lot of guest speakers come to the middle school. For example, we've had Wildlock speaker, many different things. And it's a really fun way for us to explore different things.
PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. PBIS uses a collaborative database approach to developing effective interventions involving behavior. They just help with problem behavior. Our School Resource Officer, Deputy J.R. Weaver, he has been a welcome addition to the J-CMS staff. Deputy Weaver is a former student and his children have attended our school. He is a huge part of the now and it's predicted school day.
So you can say definitely they're the experts. They're better speakers than I am. So, great job. Let's get another round of applause.
Dr. Kirby, he mentioned that Avery placed for a competition for the academic team and actually represented us in the region. He was very modest and didn't mention that. He's one of our academic team gurus and he's only in seventh grade, so that's your.
So he'll meet at that point.
Big stuff, yeah.
And he also placed third in our conservation essay contest. So that was district-wide and included the other schools as well, and he placed third.
That's something I deserve round of applause. All right, so this concludes our presentation. As you can see, we've got lots of things going on at Jackson County Middle School. Good things, great things going on, and we hope to continue that throughout the school year and on into the future. Thank you all for your time and opportunity to speak.
Okay, we'll move on now to item two B, which is Jackson County Public Schools Athletic Department Programs. Mr. Wes Bishop, who is our athletic director.
Good evening. I'm gonna be, I've not presented in a couple of years, so I am gonna present some things that we're doing, some things you need to be made aware of, some good things we're doing. All right, Inside the Numbers. Approximately nineteen hundred students, grades ten through twelve. Elementary participation, four hundred and seventy-five student athletes. Middle school participation, a hundred and fifty-two student athletes. High school participation, a hundred and thirty-three student athletes, seven hundred and sixty student athletes. That's forty percent of our student population are involved in some sort of extracurricular sporting activity. Now, that doesn't have to be high school basketball, but that includes that, all the way down to kindergarten to Cardinal Craig's over time. So forty percent of our kids. I've got a couple of pictures here of our teams this year in elementary term. Something that the district done this year and we appreciate it is we got all kids the same uniform. We got an all-new t-shirt this year. Everybody had the same. They got to pick their design, but that's the same thing. So I don't want to keep any kid from participating in any extracurricular sporting activity because of money. So the way that that was had to be done before was you'd have kids paying for uniforms, and I, you know, one year I had somebody that bought a hundred-dollar uniform. Nobody needs to do that. So we solved the issue, and it went over extremely well. Got a lot of compliments on it. Our participation numbers in elementary increased by seventy students this year. So you can't tell me that didn't have part of something to do with that. This is sangap cheer, dance, tipping tigers, sangap girls' basketball, sangap boys' basketball, town elementary cheer, dance, Cardinal Craig's, town elementary girls' basketball, town elementary boys' basketball, elementary cheer, dance, and dribblers. And these kids are, like I said, from kindergarten to fifth grade. Basketball, second, third, fourth, and fifth, but the dribblers and so on go kindergarten first. Mcelementary girls' basketball, and Mcelementary boys' basketball. So that's something, you know, that we take a lot of pride in. We have a big crowd. You know, and like I said, our participation was up greatly this year, up over seventy kids. So I think the t-shirts helped, and that's what, that's the goal, increase participation. We also started flag football this year. And that is being run through the high school football team. That's the way Coach Salsmore wanted to do it, and I'm okay with that. And he has over thirty-five kids participating, this is in third and fourth grade. The reason that we did not do third or fifth grade or elementary or flag league is our fifth graders actually play tackle football in the Southeast Kentucky Middle School Conference. Those teams are made of, due to the fact of smaller schools playing football, they do fifth and sixth-grade teams, seventh and eighth-grade teams. So our fifth graders actually play tackle with the middle school. Our third and fourth grades, it's gonna be February and March, he's doing practices right now. Games will be the last four Thursdays in March. He's got his players up there helping with drills and development. And last games of the season will be March thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, at the high school football field. If they'd like to see it. No championship or anything like that, just kids playing their regular games. So now we will go on. Now we'll go on to Jackson County Middle School Generals. So beginning January first, twenty twenty-three, SBPM at Jackson County Middle School officially changed the mascot from colonels to generals, last the mascot Jackson County High School. So when this, so the thinking behind this, and I've worked with Dr. Kirby and Mr. Smith on this, we're getting ready to do a major renovation at the middle school. So, you know, and what's the best time to, if you're gonna make a change on something like that, when is the time to do it? When you're already gonna paint the walls, when you're already gonna change the floor tile, when you're already making those changes, you're changing bathroom styles, et cetera. Okay? So it came into effect once we knew that was gonna happen, and we ended up going, or Dr. Kirby and the site base loaded this in. With that, we got a bunch of maroon and white uniforms. So I told our coaches, I said, "You guys want the best practice uniforms with everybody around?" So you have to keep your game uniforms, and they were tickled with that. So I talked to a couple of friends about their athletic directors, and we have got all new uniforms for our middle schools. And they have either been ordered or they are confirming sizes to be complete. I've got a mock-up of every uniform that we order, and that's what I'm gonna show you right now. So here's the first thing that got it. This is the first middle school team that got to play in the red, white, and blue. Our middle school volleyball team. Looking for my water, sorry. Got dried out. And anyways, like I was saying about the uniforms, they are BSN custom. It's the same thing Laurel County Schools does, a couple of the schools in Southeast Kentucky. It's a nice custom uniform made by BSN. The thing I like about it is you can get a replacement in about two to three weeks. That's important when you're dealing with middle school age kids. And they went over really well. All the kids like them. Everybody got a brand new one. That's volleyball. Here's our softball team. Actually got those in last week. That's the mock-up of it. Also bought them new helmets. Bought nine helmets for the baseball and softball teams. J-CMS baseball and cheer. Jackson County, that says J-C-H-S, I messed up on that. J-CMS basketball. That's our girls' jersey. This is our boys' jersey. J-CMS cross country. Generals, generals, red, white, and blue. J-CMS football and golf. And our golf bag has got a little blue emblem on it. They actually, they can't mock that up like they can the uniforms. We're all generals, town renovation. So when we did this, our facility, town is a very nice facility, but it had got a little age on it, so we renovated it to red, white, and blue. And we've done a lot of painting. We completely gutted the bathrooms. New flooring, paint, new stalls, everything. Completely redid the concession stand. So with buying all these new uniforms, the middle schools on a uniform rotation, just like the high school is. And I will go over that with you. And again, this is keeping every kid, Jackson County Schools, we're gonna make it where they don't have to spend a penny. I had someone, a counselor tell me earlier after we bought some stuff, parents said they come for a warm-up. I looked at the counselor and I said, "Well, that's your problem." I said, "'Cause they're gonna play. This is not gonna keep anybody from playing." And they ended up working it out. But the uniforms are paid for. Sometimes these folks, they've got a little extravagant, three or four hoodies and jackets and. All new uniforms are in use twenty-three, twenty-four. Replacements only twenty-four, twenty-five. Starting in twenty-five, twenty-six. Volleyball, archery, cross country. Twenty-six, twenty-seven. Boys' baseball, girls' softball. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Boys and girls' basketball. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Football, golf. Something we do at the high school and middle school is those golfers usually wear polos. Can't reuse them. I always want the uniform rotation to be something you can reuse. So we go out and buy them new golf bags every four years. That's their uniform. And they really like that. Replacements will be provided based upon number of kids participating in sport and sizes that may not have been provided for the initial rotation purchase. So if we end up getting kids in, you know, it may be height, weight, whatever, we will make accommodations to get those kids uniforms even after the initial run has been made. Jackson County High School, new items, title nine, new sports, new facilities in the future. Jackson County Central Office batting cage. So what we did is our kids, this is for our high school baseball and softball teams, they have had the need for an indoor facility that they can use when basketball's not in session, so we met that need. It's got a full turf floor, sixteen by eighty, and it's got a seventy-five by fifteen-foot cage that goes on. And they can go in there and hit all they like, whether it does not affect it. Track and field. This is something we're working on, you'll see in my next slide. We're actually getting the basis for this, which is a high jump mat and the long jump pit built this week. Long jump pit actually got done today. That's soap grass around it, but it got done today for long jump and triple jump. This will be our high jump mat. That will be stationed. If you're on our football field and you come in and you look to the flat area to your left, that's where we're gonna have it. It's gonna have a cover on it. It's gonna have a weighty chain down. So it will be in operational use, I'm hoping, in the next two weeks, so. And here is our new jump pit. Now, I know all this right here looks the same. This is, I think, around eighteen tons of sand. Is that sixteen to eighteen tons of sand?
Eighteen inches deep.
Eighteen inches deep at the end of our pit. Now, some places you go, the pit will be six inches deep. Now, if I go and I jump somewhere, and I probably couldn't jump very far, I wouldn't want six inches of sand to stop me. So imagine a hundred-and-fifty-pound kid jumping twelve feet and using six inches of sand. So we got eighteen inches. We got a foot and a half of sand. Made it as safe as possible for those kids. And this will be on the far end of the football field. It had to be there due to drainage, electrical issues, et cetera. And we started our bass fishing team back this year. And this weekend was their first time going fishing. They don't have their uniforms in. We have ordered them, or those for them. It ended up, I mean, our interest, I hope, stays this way, because, like I said, we've had it before. I want to keep it. I don't want it to get down to one or two kids. And hopefully, we can do that. Biggest fish of the cop. There's a couple of prizes we got won. And now, this is something, you know, that kids can, they might not be able to do something else, they may get into this and be extremely good at. And that is the purpose of all this. That's the purpose of having our athletic programs, the purpose of having anything extracurricular. We want these kids to have something that makes them want to be here. This is Jackson County High School uniform schedule. This is made by our Gender Equity Review Committee. We meet three times a year, which consists of coaches, parents, and students, and administrators. Two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, this school year, our baseball, softball, and bass fishing, got uniforms. Next year, football home, volleyball, golf, archery. Twenty-four, twenty-five, boys and girls' basketball, cheer. Twenty-five, twenty-six, football away, track, cross country. Uniform schedule is approved by the Gender Equity Review Committee. Every student that participates in a sport for four years will be provided a new uniform during the time of the tank. So that's part of our, of having a uniform policy. You want that kid, they start as a freshman, by the time they're a senior, they get one new uniform at least. Title nine of one of our Gender Equity Review Committee will be it. And that's kind of things they do. And some title nine is, is it's not looking and going, "Well, boys' basketball has this, or basketball has this, and football don't have this." Gender equity. Meaning if you have a custom uniform for boys' basketball, you gotta have one for girls' basketball. You got a stock uniform for everything else. That's a way out there example, but that's what it means. Genders have to be equitable. Uniform rotation, equitable spending, Hall of Fame credentials. Your Gender Equity Review Committee sets your Hall of Fame credentials. Participation list in the school, inter survey. So the inter survey is something, you probably hear some people discuss it or talk about it, you know, as far as getting a new sports team. Oh, we need this, we need that. The purpose of the inter survey is to give us the information that says, "Okay, you need bass fishing, you need track and cross country, you need these things." So, you know, for example, let's say soccer. I got three kids that signed up, or that said they wanted soccer last time. You can't reasonably look at that and go, "We need to add that." You see what I'm saying? So that gives the kids a chance to do their thing. This is given to eighth through eleventh graders. So some items we're working on for the future. Wake room renovation. Reposter current machines with fabric and padding in the wake room, powder coat existing equipment. Paint the wake room and get some new doors on there. There's no timetable been set, but that's something we want to do in the future. We've been getting some new bars and equipment, et cetera. And nicely, a huge project is our baseball and softball scoreboards. I think there's been some misinformation given about these, but I'd like to clear the error with you. I remember one time, looked at a coach, parent, or player, and said, "You're gonna have a fundraiser for this." It's never been the plan. I've worked on these for a while. It's always been a sponsorship project. So we're getting sponsorship dollars. They get to be on the sides, and I mean, that's what we're doing. We've never, I've never asked anybody to fundraise. Anybody that has told you that has done you something not true. So that's something I've been working on with Coach Lakes, the baseball coach. And I think, you know, hopefully, in the near future, that will happen. I think we're getting pretty close. We've had some folks that have committed to us, so I'm hoping that's something that we get completed in the near future. Thank you very much. Any questions or?
What about the existing scoreboards from the high school?
The existing scoreboards, they look, I mean, they look good. They're not bad. They're fully functional. They're good scoreboards. But I figured if we could go and not use taxpayer money, which is a big part of this, using donations, we could get our kids something nicer, something that looks better. Our old scoreboards, we could keep, they're the same thing that we had at town. So we could keep those in storage and use those town in case something happened. And anything could happen with those at any day. I mean, I'd place a new, I can't remember what the board's called, but it's some sort of mechanical board that has to be used for it to work. It can be used for parts, et cetera.
What do we add on the netting for the baseball and softball?
Thank you. I forgot about that. That has been ordered through BSN. I would have told that's two to three weeks away. So we ordered two sections of sixty-five by eighty, I think I'm correct on that, which will cover the commons area in between the baseball and softball field, where we'll keep the danger down. I went and looked, showed Mr. Smith several pictures of some facilities I went to and looked at those. And, you know, I think we did the right thing. I think, I think it will help immensely with that.
But they're very nice needs.
They're very nice.
We went up to major it, so it would be exactly what it should be.
Yes.
Bishop and Wayne.
Hopefully, we'll have them kind of when the season starts or somewhat shortly after.
Yes, that's, that's the goal. But, you know, we've already got a plan as far as how to anchor them, where to put them in at, and. Does anybody else have anything?
Thank you. Good presentation. Thank you. Good presentation. The next item under Communications is two C. We've got Gifted Intelligent Program. Let's amend the ball.
Hello, it's good to be with you all again tonight. I'm putting on a different hat tonight. I'm gonna talk to you from my gifted education perspective. Every year, I've been trying to make an effort to give you an update on how it's going and what we're doing. So that is my purpose tonight. And I would like to say that I really love hearing all the things we're doing athletically for our students because it is such an important thing for, it brings every, athletics helps to bring you an education. And tied all together, as a former athlete, I don't think that I would have gotten the education that I got if I hadn't participated in athletics. So I'm really excited to hear about all those things. I'm gonna just start out by talking to you about what February is in the gifted education world. And you may or may not have saw the newspaper article, and then we did some social media posts about this. But the state of Kentucky has declared that February, they went with the CAGE Conference and organization, which is the Kentucky Association for Gifted Education. And Governor Beshear announced that they were proclaiming February as Gifted Education Month in Kentucky. So along those same lines, I contacted Mr. Gaber, Mr. Shane Gaber, the Jackson County Judge Executive, and spoke to him about offering our own proclamation here in Jackson County. And he was happy to oblige. And so we loaded up our middle schoolers and took them down there a couple of weeks ago and got to watch him sign the proclamation. It was a great experience for them. They hadn't even, some of them had never been in the courthouse before, so they got to go explore a little bit. Really excited about this, and Mr. Gaber has said that he will make it an annual thing if we're open to that. I think that will be a very exciting experience. I'm gonna try to take different groups of kids each year and let them see this proclamation being done. Some other things that we do, I've tried to include as many pictures as possible because I know you all want to see the kids. We do different units. I try to, I have them do a lot of enrichment activities. Try to explore things outside of what they would be doing in the classroom, maybe in addition to what they're doing in the classroom. So one of the first things we do this year is the postcards to space. You can see that down in the left corner. This was an opportunity that I came across on the internet. And each kid decorated a postcard, and this was all of my students in grades K through five, which represents about, I have about a hundred altogether at all three elementary schools. And they all made a postcard. Those postcards, I mailed in to an organization, and they are sending them up in a rocket and then sending them back to us. They will be stamped with the date that they went into space. So the kids all loved doing that, and they thought it was really cool. And for the first two weeks, every single day, I had at least four or five kids ask me, are our postcards back yet? Unfortunately, they don't understand, but it takes a little while to get to space and back. So we haven't received those back yet, but I'm hoping that that happens before the end of the school year, if nothing else. We also do an electrical circuit unit, and you can see them up there in the middle at the top. They are building circuits with what we call snack circuits. They, this is a really hands-on activity where they get to explore circuits and see how they work and build different things. Great STEM activity. We also, along the STEM lines, around Halloween, when candy corn was out and about, we did some candy corn mazes. They always, I'm always in awe of the creativity that some of them have and the ability to engineer things. So they always surprise me with some of the things they come up with. There's some other things.
Okay, I'm here with our winner of the creativity game.
I've got some videos throughout, so I would like to talk to you about them first before they play. So up in the top corner, you all probably saw the snowman that my middle schoolers made. They engineered that by themselves. I kind of facilitated an idea with them, and then they, they did all the hard work. They did all the cups. They, they used solo cups, clear solo cups, and staples, and they made the snowman that was out there. We had some lights added in the interior of him, and he lit up, and he was pretty festive around the Christmas season. We also did, in just a minute, I'm gonna play you this video, but this was some engineering activities that we did. I have a game that I have cards on, and they have regular household objects on them, and the students need to combine those and make their own invention. So I'll let Zeke tell you about Kea's invention here. He'll play that video coming in.
Okay, I'm here with our winner of the creativity game.
What's it not? It is me.
He's going to explain the cards that he got and then what he created with them. So go ahead, Zeke.
So I got a blender, a speaker, and a pencil. So you can listen to music, and then it can give you a little protein shake while you're walking, and then it can write the essays.
Write essays, okay. Great job. Everybody give me a hand.
That was just one of the creations that they made. They had a great time explaining their creations to everybody else, so we did a little interview process on that. Going on there, block coding I do with my elementary students. That's getting them ready for more complex coding that they can do later on in the computer science world. We have computer science standards here in Kentucky, and I like to dabble into those just a little bit. They use blocks to make commands, to make video games and other things while they're with me, in a program called Scratch. Down at the bottom, you see some more circuits being created, and then we had this middle school activity with my middle schoolers. We combined some literacy and physics to make some, this was around Halloween time as well. They made ghosts that they had a ghost race with. They had to, I gave them some supplies, and they had to build everything and figure out how to, how to adjust their ghost or how to make changes in order to make it go faster. That went along with the novel that we were reading about, it was a spooky story they picked around Halloween time. One of my goals this year, every year, I sit down and I try to think about things that I could do better, things that went well, and this year's goal was more community collaboration. So I got up with the public library in Jackson County, and we have collaborated. I had them come in about once every two months so far, and I haven't got up with them this spring to start our spring schedule yet, but they would come in and read a book to the kids, and then they would do some sort of STEM activity. So sometimes that included building things with Legos that matched the story, and sometimes they did some drawings and, and other things. So that's a picture of that up at the top. At the bottom, you can see some of my middle school students. I got up with a company called Create and Learn. Some of the conferences that I get to go to, I get new ideas for things to do with these students. This one was one of those. They offer online training for students, and they participated in this for a period of three weeks, where they got to learn Python coding, which is a more complex code. They did some block coding as well, it was a little bit more advanced than the elementary students do. And then they also did some app creation. So they got to create their own app that can be uploaded or downloaded from Apple or on an Apple iOS product or on Android. So they were really interested in all of that. We also explore the arts. This year, we've had a big focus on music. You can see in just a moment, this is one of the activities that I like to do, the fog balloon whackers. Each student gets their own pillar, and they have to follow a pattern that's up on the smart board or the interactive panel. And they're supposed to whack the balloon whacker at the correct time to make music. And you can judge for yourself. Is this music playing a lot? I don't know, but it sounds pretty cute. These are kindergartners. With this lesson, we talk about rhythm and the different sounds that the tubes make. They all make their own note, and we talk about chords and different things related to music. We also do blob opera up at the top. Those are some little blobs, it's not blob. Those are little blobs that they can, we talk about the singing voice and the ranges of the singing voice. And then they get to experiment, make their own, or quartet, I guess it's called, for four people. And they get to share those with other students and with me, and they really had a good time doing that. And then the other one that you see here is a, another app by Google that allows them to compose their own music. And I've got an example here. You'll click that camera in, it'll take you to some music that a student created. So it's kind of a way to, to get them to experiment with different instruments, but also in a way that's affordable and efficient, and they're able to do that virtually now, which is amazing, I think. This is our most recent thing, today, in fact, we got to go on a field trip. I took all third, fourth, and fifth graders to the EK Center of the Arts, where they got to watch the production of Junie D. Jones. And you can go ahead and play that. This is just a look at all of the kids that got to go, sixty-three of them in fact. Lots of excitement there. Some of them had never been on the bus before. And many of them had never witnessed a live production of anything before. So great experiences for them that they might not get otherwise. For my middle schoolers, this is one of the recent things that we have been doing is robotics. We have, we're fortunate enough to have a set of sparrow robots here in the district, and they get to use coding, that block coding they talked to you about, they get to use that, and use these robots to do things like, here you'll see them racing. So I just wanted to tell you about a few other things we've got coming up. The Gatton Academy of Math and Science is a program in Kentucky. It's hosted at Morehead State. They have an academy for students who are interested in STEM like math and science. They invite students starting in seventh and eighth grade that show interest, and they are gonna come and talk to my students in the next couple of weeks. And then also, the Art Center of the Bluegrass is in Dangle, and we did a virtual field trip with them last year, and they are, they've opened that up again, where students get to do visual arts while they are looking at the displays that they have at the center there, and they get to hear some art history. I think that was it. Thank you all for having me.
Next presentation is Student Enrollment Seek Updates with Lieutenant Mike Smith. This is something I typically do in February of each year. Before you do that, Cameron, you want to shoot the AEDs up?
We ordered, in December, we ordered new AEDs for each school. And all of those came in in January, and we're very pleased, but each school got a completely new AED. And as we upgraded from CR1 to CR2, I think that's correct, isn't it, Cameron?
That's correct.
And Cameron is the person in the district who responsibly goes around on a monthly basis, checks some documents, and you want to kind of explain some of what you're doing there, you can still.
Basically, I just go from every single school, every single month. It's got a little green LED indicator on there. The older ones just had like a battery gauge. These are actually a lot easier to see. Anybody can look at them and ask and make sure they're operational. But I just make sure every month that they look green, let's flash it. The battery is actually a four-year battery. The older ones are two, so we're gonna have to replace those as often as.
And we document all that, so we have a record in the world. So we're very pleased that we could have a new AED each year. Now, the business side. Again, Student Enrollment Seek Updates, you'll shoot that one sheet back up. I'll go through this slowly and point some things. Two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, school year Student Enrollment and Seek Update, and I started back in two thousand sixteen, seventeen. SEEK is support educational excellence in Kentucky. That's the primary source of funding for Kentucky's public schools, especially rural districts like Jackson County. It's critical. Our local funding is approximately ten percent of our total budget. A lot of people don't realize that, but of our total budget, only ten percent of it comes within the county approximately depending on the year. Okay, the SEEK is based on the students' adjusted average daily attendance. The big adjustment on AADA was half-day kindergarten. Even though we have full-day kindergarten, we often get paid for half-day. So for easy math, we had two hundred kindergartners who had ninety percent attendance, that would be a hundred and eighty kids. We would only get an equitable amount of half of that. So I really didn't agree with that, but that changed, and I'll get into that in a few minutes. Okay, there's been a decrease in enrollment in southeastern Kentucky in recent years. Other districts who are similar to us, all of them had a decrease in enrollment a couple of years before we did. Our started in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, but when it hit, it hit really hard, as you can see. And another key thing in yellow, the ADA and that SEEK lagged one year. The prior year ADA is used for the SEEK funding. So when you see eighteen eighty-two right there, that's where the eleven million two hundred ninety-six comes from, and it lags a year. So what we're doing right now will be what our SEEK funding is based on for next year. So we'll go down to eighteen nineteen. We had one thousand nine hundred forty-nine kids. During the year, we lost twenty-one. And ended up an ADA of seventeen eighty-one from seventeen eighteen and eleven million two hundred and eight one thousand. As I said, SEEK is the primary source of funding for almost all Kentucky, the school districts, definitely the rural districts. Okay, the enrollment loss, I would attribute that to job availability. I know Mr. Bishop works with that on a daily basis. What would you attribute this enrollment loss to? I know it's a multiple phase.
And the census were under thirteen thousand for the first time in over thirty years. So our population in Jackson County is dropping. And like I said, it's under, it's under thirteen thousand.
So in two thousand nineteen, twenty, we had not one thousand nine hundred and eighteen kids starting the year. We ended with one thousand eight hundred eighty-nine, the loss of twenty-nine. And our AADA was seventeen oh-three for eighteen nineteen school year. Ten million eight hundred eighty-six. Twenty twenty-one, I believe that's when COVID started, the General Assembly provided that we could keep our eighteen nineteen data. Everything was so turned upside down, and Dr. Kirby's heard me talk about this many times in our administrators meetings, and the board's actually heard me talk about the eighteen nineteen data many times, the kind of works. But the legislature allowed us to keep our eighteen nineteen data, which was to our advantage. So you see in, there's eighteen nineteen data, seventeen oh-three, it's duplicated seventeen oh-three there. There's a lot more to SEEK than AADA, but this is a big chunk of it. So it stayed about the same, our SEEK money stayed about the same, ten million eight hundred eighty-six, ten million eight hundred ninety-three, so virtually the same. We got to the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we started with one thousand eight hundred eighty-nine kids. We ended up with one thousand eight hundred seventy-six for a loss of thirteen. We actually had growth in the previous year, plus three. It looks like we've kind of stabilized around nineteen hundred. Do you agree with us?
Yes. We've had numbers, we've had in the last month, nineteen ten to eighteen ninety and in between. So I mean, it's, it's give or take.
Close to a lot.
Yeah.
So there's the seventeen oh-three from eighteen nineteen data, generated ten million eight hundred ninety-three dollars. Okay, here we keep the eighteen nineteen data again. This is last year. We began with eighteen eighty-nine, we ended with eighteen seventy-six for a loss of thirteen. And if we kept eighteen nineteen data, how did we get an increase in SEEK of approximately four hundred thousand? That was from full-day kindergarten. The legislature passed a bill which funded full-day kindergarten. First time I can ever remember that being done. And like I mentioned earlier, I didn't really agree with it, and probably nobody else does. But all of our kindergartners, we only get half funding for them, even though we have a full-day program. So any questions up to this point? Okay, we come to twenty-two, twenty-three. And this, keeping this eighteen nineteen data was on a year-over-year basis. We didn't know sometimes January or February that we would actually keep it for the upcoming year. The legislature extended it. So beginning this school year, we began with one thousand nine hundred and one kids currently. And that's as of last Thursday, we have one thousand eight hundred eighty-nine. Again, there's your nineteen seventeen ninety-seven, which includes the full-day kindergarten. But as you see, we've got an increase there at eleven of about probably four hundred thousand. We're eleven million six hundred thirty-six, six ninety, whatever it is, six eighty-six. The legislature again came back and acted. And they, we kept our full-day kindergarten transportation funding. Again, something that not a lot of people realize, they increased our transportation funding. And let me explain that. Transportation funds, your T codes, your mileage, it all goes into a big formula that nobody can calculate with them. And for easy math, if they said it takes a million dollars for Jackson County public schools to transport their students, we would get fifty-two percent of that. We do not get fully funded on transportation. So for easy math, if it was a million dollars, we'd get five hundred and twenty thousand. That's just for easy math. They actually increased it to sixty-eight percent for us. So we went from fifty-two percent up to sixty-eight percent on our transportation funding. Still far away from being fully funded, but yet what is that sixteen percent better? And twenty-three, twenty-four, this is what we project. That one sheet, Cameron, if you want to shoot it up, the one about the SAR, so I can show everybody where I got the numbers. Okay, the SAR, the one number I got, eighteen eighty-nine. This is what I ran last Thursday. If you go to the bottom line of that, that breaks it down school to school. And the bottom line on the second page. If you can see that, I think that is what, Cameron, eighteen eighty-nine. So that's where I got that number. That's the data source. If you want to go to the SEEK twenty-two, twenty-three, another data source page I got. We get a SEEK forecast. We used to get it in January. Last year we got it in April. There's also a tentative SEEK, what's, it's what this is. It's the next one, and later in the year we get a final SEEK. So another component of that increase, I don't know if you can see that or not, but that increase in four thousand forty-one hundred, that went along with transportation with full-day kindergarten. So that was four thousand. The year before, they increased it to forty-one hundred. And there's the number that I had, eleven million six hundred thirty-six thousand. So those are actual numbers. And if you want to go to the A D M A D A report, some more source data. We project next year that we'll have an A D A of one thousand six hundred and seventy kids. I think right there it says one thousand eight hundred and what? The funding A D A? One thousand six hundred eighty-seven. So that will reduce between now and the end of the year. And there's our attendance percentage, which is eighty-nine and one thirty-seven. That's far from what we wanted. Typically, at this time of year, we would be ninety-two and a half percent or better. We've had a tremendous amount of sickness. We all know that. We're not the only district that's had the sickness. At the beginning of the year, Dr. Kirby will remember that I had each principal do a attendance improvement plan. We worked on it really hard, but sickness just kind of knocking the heads out of our state and bread.
That's correct. And we project a ninety-three percent, but we haven't reached that goal. And it's attributed mostly to sickness.
Yes. It's just been a whole year of sickness. So not only is our enrollment going down, and again, this is what our next year's funding comes from. We have a really bad attendance percentage. There's a lot of districts in southeastern Kentucky and what I go to that are like eighty-five, eighty-six, and eighty-seven percent right now. So ours, even though it's not what we want, it's still better than a lot of them. Still not what we want. It should be ninety-two and a half to ninety-three percent right now. So that's the source data there. I think I've covered all the source data. Okay, if you go to the sheet for SEEK calculator sheet. Like I said, the SEEK forecast has not been furnished to us yet. It used to be always furnished in January. We didn't get it for April last year. So myself and Miss Daniel, we actually have a SEEK calculator sheet. We calculated our own SEEK. And as you'll see right there, we put sixteen seventy. That's what we project our A A D A for this current school year will be. And another change is part of the legislature, it's a annual budget. Instead of forty-one hundred, we've got an extra hundred dollars right there, which contributes to about a hundred and sixty-seven thousand more in our SEEK money. Uh, you see your at-risk, which is the free lunch, home hospital application, your home hospital. I'm sorry, home household application. So if you're monitoring high, those are the special needs kids, those are actual numbers. Those are from the December first student count. And if you go to the bottom, this is what we project our SEEK will be. Again, this is a projection, but I think it'd be very, very close, eleven million one hundred and thirty-seven thousand. So if you go back to the original sheet, that shows you where we got all of our numbers from. So there's eleven million one hundred and seventeen thousand. Our SEEK money, we project next year will be a half a million less than what it was this year. And again, I've talked about this for three years. Is that correct, Brett?
That's correct, yeah.
And I've talked to the board about this for three years. So that's something that's out of our control and it is what it is. If we hadn't received the extra hundred dollars on our A D A, which is approximately a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, our SEEK money would have been down about six hundred and seventy thousand. Half a million is about enough, but six seventy would be more. So I'll just go through this from the end of the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year to the beginning of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We had a loss of thirteen students. The General Assembly allowed districts to substitute the SEEK A A D A data from the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year for these three school years, twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three. We would get up to January, February each year, and they would extend it for another year. That's probably not going to happen this time. The twenty-one, twenty-two school year also included full-day kindergarten. We talked about that earlier, which provided an increase in A A D A and that SEEK. At this point, the full-day kindergarten is just for a two-year period. We're in a two-year biennial, so we get that next year. There was actually a house bill that was filed to make the full-day kindergarten permanent in statute. And they were got off the floor when they even signed the committee. So right now, the full-day kindergarten, the word they use to make it permanent is qualified. It's just like any other thing, the budget. It could be there, it could not be there. I would anticipate and hope that it is, but it may not be, depending on the state budget. At the beginning of the sixteen, seventeen school year, enrollment was two thousand one hundred and twenty-seven. As compared to the beginning of this school year, it was a decrease of two hundred and twenty-six kids. So you can see when the decrease started, it hit really hard. And like I mentioned earlier, it hit the other districts a couple of years before it did us. But it's hit really, really hard these past five or so years. So we will continue to monitor this very closely. We have prepared for this. We knew it was coming one, two, and three years ago. So we have prepared. A lot of districts haven't prepared. When you go to your K S B A training, they'll talk about fiscal cliff, the financial cliff, where they haven't done proper preparation for this. But we have done the proper preparation forward and will move forward. So that's important that we understand this as we look forward into the next school year. Does anybody have any questions? I know it's a lot of information, a lot of numbers, but it's important that we all realize exactly what the SEEK formally is and have. It's a big part of our budget. Any questions? Thank you. May that conclude, I'm sorry, item two E, substitute report and personnel report. As always, that's on closest attachment for your review. With communications being completed, I'll terminate the meeting over to Chairman Neel with item number three.
Item number three, approval of bills and claims. Need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Heisman?
Yes, ma'am.
Item number four, approval of a memorandum of January seventeen, twenty twenty-three regular board meeting. Need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Heisman?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Item number five, approval of a memorandum of one hundred and ten between partners for real impact in the Jackson County Public Schools.
This is a great opportunity for a district. Back in August of two thousand twenty-two, and I believe a regular board meeting, the board approved for us to participate in this grant. It involved twelve other school districts in our region, as well as partners for real impact. And we were notified in January that we actually, or they actually received the grant. So the grant is ten million a year for five years. It's ten million a year for five years each. So it totals fifty million dollars over a five-year period. That's for partners for real impact and us. We don't obviously get all of that. It's split. I don't know exactly how that will split. But a big part of that, they will have a site coordinator position at each school. The site coordinator is actually an employee of Partners for Real Impact. They're their employee, they hire them. But we'll have one in each school, each elementary, middle school, Dr. Kirby, and also the high school. There'll also be direct service money to work toward the goals of the grant. And there is a lot of flexibility that I feel we can work with the principals and work with Promise Partners for Real Impact, customize some things to meet some needs of our schools. So we don't know exactly how much the direct service money will be, but it's a really good grant. I would compare it quite a bit to the Promise Safety Grant that we had a few years ago. But the actual title of the grant is the Full Service Community School State Grant. And Mr. Hogg and also another representative of Partners for Real Impact will be here at the May Board Meeting. Again, a great opportunity for us and eleven other districts, as well as Promise Partners for Real Impact. And they will be here at the March twenty-first board meeting to give a much better overview and more depth than I did.
Item number five, need a motion?
To the Congress.
Need a second?
Second.
Ms. Heisman? Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Item number six, approval of a district calendar committee as provided for by the Jackson County Board of Education Policy zero eight point three. I think Ms. Allen was asked about this.
My thoughts on it is, which I discussed with Mr. Smith the other day. It would be nice, I know that there's not a statute that requires members of the community to be on it. And what I would like to see, you know, from here on out, is members of the community that positions are available for, that we reach out to those, those members. The people that's on, that's going to be on the committee, they are a wealth of information. But it would be nice to see just people that's not part of the school board to be on it.
Does that not fall under number eight, two business slash community members? Am I looking at it right, babe?
You are.
So it's got, the first one is the district principal. The second, the district office administrator, board member, parents, district elementary teacher, district middle or high school teacher, district classified employees, and then two business slash community members. So currently it's in the same game?
Yeah, any, like I said, they're a wealth of information and they're, you know, they're great at what they do. It would just be nice to reach out to the parents that aren't employed by the school system and community members that's not employed by the school system.
Policy considered.
It's within, it's within the criteria of the policy. That's what you're asking. She's just saying she prefers people to don't work for the school system, be on the committee. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was like I discussed.
So, Mr. Bishop, will you note that? I know you're, over the calendar committee will note that. And we have a really good calendar committee. I don't think we've ever had a complaint, have we?
No, not from inside the committee, we've not.
So, but we can look at that if the board wants it. I mean, if the entire board wants it, we can look at that. I mean, I don't know, I've never had this come up in the board, so I don't really know how to approach it.
It's been pretty harmonious in my four years, we at D P P, with the calendar committee that we have assembled.
But we can look at that. If there's an opportunity to add people outside the school district, we could. If we're not able to, then we would probably have to go with these.
And nobody knows unless they're actually, you know, approached and asked, you know, hey, you've got a kid that goes to Tyler, would you like to be on his team?
It's actually business leader. You have to be, it's a dual.
That you've got a parent representative.
Correct.
That's, that was just my thoughts. We could look into what other school districts do. I mean, I, I don't have a problem with seeing.
There's, there's actually a policy that governs this. And it's policy eight point three.
Policy, our policy?
Yes, it's our policy. Standard K S B A policy that all districts have. I think her point is she doesn't want people in the school system in those realms. She wants somebody not in the school system.
It's just to open up opportunities. To bring, to bring in.
To replace.
Oh, okay. I thought you was in addition to what you were.
No, it's to replace our employees with people who are not in the school system. Correct?
Correct. If it says a parent representative as opposed to somebody that is employed inside the school system, to have just a parent.
Well, it's the pleasure of the board. I'll do it, have you guys, correct, Mr. Bishop? We'll do it, have you guys, probably this year, it may be a little too late, but next year.
Right.
But it's the pleasure of the board. You guys direct us on what you want to do, and that's what we'll do.
I've never had a problem with the calendar, except like if we go, I've never liked us having school on Memorial Day. But I know we always have like a big.
Our preference would be not to do that.
I know. And I bet it's only because it's had snow days and stuff like that. But personally, I've, I've never had a problem. But I mean, it's everybody else's idea.
Yeah, I just, you have, you know, I think one year we had like fifty-three days missed in schools. If I could just come off for the last, what, couple of years or something, I think, to have set up the calendar. Ain't that the way it is?
As far as setting the calendar, they do the last five years of your, of your snow days.
Make-up days is what you're referring to. You have to build make-up days until the end of the calendar.
Yeah, you have to build make-up days. And you have to take the highest of your last five years. The highest number of days you were off, that has to be your make-up base, highest number of last five years.
It's not really complex, but there's a lot to it. You have to have P D days, you have to have opening and closing, you have to have holidays, election day, those things where our schools are holding places now.
And you got to build some breaks.
So there's a lot to it.
Right, you got to build some breaks in for the kids and the employees, I mean, like.
So I guess you guys direct us on what you want us to do, and we'll do it, or, yes, sir?
And can I say this too? This year we have, and we still got some days to spare, both N T I and days off. And we're going to be getting out before Memorial Day, and we're going to still have a full week of spring break. So that, and that's something that I'm pretty happy about. I, I think everybody else will be too.
Providing the weather holds up through March.
I better get my shorts on.
The direction for next year, if we want to replace the school employees with somebody outside or like the school employees? I guess, is that the question that you hear, Mr. Bishop?
That's the question, but I don't, I don't, I just don't know if you can classify somebody because they're a school employer or not being on a committee, you know, to keep them from being on.
I'm pleasure of the board, I'm finding it, so you guys can.
I would say we need to ask some questions and gather more knowledge and information on it.
Yeah.
The pleasure of the board, if the committee's approved of you guys, will you direct me on what you would like, and we'll do it that way?
But like, this, this is pretty well set for this year. It'll have to be looked at for next year, right? So we're looking at.
Well, next, probably next week, and I'll be going over the calendar here and in the following week. We'll have to prove the calendar, so we really don't have time to set it up in committee at this point. Does that make sense to everybody? I'm trying to.
Yeah, I was just thinking, not this time, but you know, in the future.
Okay, thank you.
So item number six, need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second? Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Heisman?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Item number seven, approval of a dual-credit memorandum of agreement between Somerset Community College and the Jackson County School District for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four school year.
This is something we're very proud of, our dual-credit program. And actually, we have Somerset, Somerset Community College, we also have two other colleges and universities that we work with, Eastern Kentucky University and Murray State. So our students, before they actually leave the high school, can have up to forty college credit hours. Dual credit means they get high school credit, and while they're taking the class, they also get college credit at the same time. So they could actually be up in their sophomore year of college prior to ever leaving their high school. So we're very proud that we can offer that. And again, if they really work at it, they could have forty-plus hours of college credit. This is one agreement, the other two should come later in the year.
Need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Heisman?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Item number eight, approval to advertise for requests for the. Item number eight, approval to advertise for request for the purpose for the Jackson County High School cafeteria upgrade. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Heisman?
Yes.
Item nine, approval of memorandum of agreement with the Coon River Behavioral Health and provide services for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Ms. Heisman?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Item ten, approval to advertise for bid for McKeel Elementary School wall panel and software panel installation and repair project.
As we know, we've completed the roofing project at San Gaff. We've also completed the roofing project at Tanner. They're currently working on the roof at McKeel Elementary. This is the metal that goes around the top of the building to seal the envelope and make a tight seal. So we've got the specs, and we'll take bids. And once the roof's completed, then that would be the next step, would be to do the metal around the top of the building, or what they refer to as the building envelope. So we've talked about this for a while, but we're very close to seeing it happen.
Need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Heisman?
Yes.
Item eleven, approval of agreement between Jackson County School District and connection speech and language. There'd be L L C. Need a motion?
Need a motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Heisman?
Yes.
Item twelve, approval of the Financial Services Resolution for the Jackson County Bank. Need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Heisman?
Yes.
Item thirteen, approval of fundraising, need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Ms. Heisman?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
And item fourteen, we had a public comment, nobody's signed in.
Nobody.
Could there be a longer comment?
I was not, I was not derelict. I was meeting with a staff member. I don't know if Mr. Smith told you.
No, he made him prior, and I came down earlier.
Yes, yes. I apologize for being late, but that was the reason.
We all right this time, but this time only.
Don't do it.
I just can't, just can't.
I don't do that.
Okay. Item fifteen, approval to adjourn. Need a motion?
Second.
Need a second? Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Heisman?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.